You are good.
Okay, seeing the presence of a quorum, I'm called to order this meeting in the Pelham School Committee at 6:30 PM. We are supposed to approve minutes. Sasha put them all together and I just forgot to send them to you all. So we will have to table that for next time. Public comment, I did not receive anything. So Mike, I hope you're ready because you're up already.
I'm actually gonna do, I'm gonna pass the ball tonight to, to Lee because Lee has a tremendous number of fantastic updates. Because the agenda items that I have kind of encompassed some of the updates I would give and budget for preschool. I'm gonna pass it on to Lee who will do that and I'll give more updates along the way on the agenda items listed.
Okay, great.
Well, I brought props because I figured it was gonna be a long meeting. I wanted to share with you a couple, a couple of things that are happening in the community. So I'll start as usual with the students. So our all-school read this month is Mixed Me by Tay Diggs. So it's one of the books that we chose in partnership with High Five Books. They're all about BIPOC kids or BI BIPOC authors and this one is about identity. In keeping with the theme of anti-racism, in our school this year, we're working on Black History Month all year long. And right now, our third graders are learning about black scientists and inventors. And we're gearing up for our all-school meeting in February where all classes will get to share some of the Black History Month all-year-long learning that they've been doing this year. Exciting news, our Paw Print student-run newspaper has started up. So the students met for the first time this past week and we'll have the first edition hitting inboxes soon. We also have our very first cardboard challenge happening next weekend. So that's coordinated by our amazing art teacher. And she's really encouraged everyone to save all their Amazon boxes for the past month. So apologies to all the families with massive stacks of cardboard. But it should be really cool to see some of the things that the kids make. One of our other specialists, our PE teacher, Mr. Arabian, is going to be offering community workouts starting on Wednesday evenings, starting next week. So I'll add that to this week's Pelham Press. Just as a way for folks to hit the reset button, he's gonna incorporate mindfulness and some of the workout moves that he does with the kids in PE class, but they'll be for everybody. And then finally, our kindergarten museum is in process right now. So starting this week, families will be able to come, two families at a time, signed up with Mr. Lori and Ms. Sage to come see some of the kindergartners work out on the field. So we're excited to be rethinking some, some of the traditions. Ron?
Did I hear you correctly, kindergarten exam?
Oh, museum, museum. Thank you for clarifying. No, we're not, we're.
There's a new sheriff in town.
No, I, no, no, no. Oh, gosh. Well, that would get me run out of town pretty quickly, I think. So moving on to staff. The staff, as you know, we've been looking really closely at attendance. And right now, we're trying to take a little bit of a deeper look behind the attendance numbers to what the engagement looks like. So we're doing a little bit of short-term data collection and having some great conversations with the staff about how we can support families and students engaging with remote learning and all the different ways that that can look. We had a professional development day yesterday and we did a combination of some digital learning tools. And we're continuing on with our year-long book study of this book, try to get it on screen. It's called Onward and it's about cultivating emotional resilience. And the chapter that we worked through yesterday was about optimism, which, I mean, optimism in January should probably be the theme of every professional development, especially in this time. So it was really uplifting. We spent some time talking about stories about students that we've loved and that we've, we shared with each other. And it was, it was a really nice community-building time in the midst of a really busy week. So we also have some upcoming professional development on the updated Let's Talk curriculum, formerly known as SKI. And I know you'll be hearing more about that when we come together next month. And then finally, we have a group of staff working to plan our Black History Month all-school meeting. And then last but not least, our family community is also reading an exciting book. So this month's book for our family staff book club is by Dr. Bettina Love. It's called We Want to Do More Than Survive. And Dr. Love came and addressed the entire staff at our, at our district-wide professional development day in November. And she's just really inspiring to a lot of our staff. So it was an easy pick for the next read. So we'll be meeting in February to talk about that book. There's a PTO meeting tonight. So I know we may have lost some folks to that or people are jumping back and forth. They're in the midst of a logo contest and they're also looking for a few new board members for next year. So just a little extra plug for the PTO. All of you are very busy, so I wouldn't recommend taking that on. But if you know anyone who wants to get more involved in the school community, it's a great way to do it. Ron?
Just a hint on the logo, if it includes anything like a pine tree, make sure it's a hemlock.
I've been tipped off to the controversy, so I'll pass that along. And then finally, I'm continuing on with my afternoon tea times with families and getting some input from the community about themes that would be helpful. So whether that's bringing in one of our in-house staff experts to talk about something like mindfulness or healthy tech habits for families or movement breaks, kind of just getting a sense from the parent community about things that would be helpful. But those will continue on too. So busy as always at school. Any other questions from folks?
All right. Thanks so much, Lee. All right, next up is fiscal year '22 budget.
Yep. And so before we turn it over to Dr. Slaughter, I just want to give a couple of updates that I chose to do. I'll choose to do now because it influences things. So we had a meeting with staff by, we, I mean, Dr. Slaughter, I'm just gonna say Doug, we're gonna, we're in Pelham, we're among friends. So Doug, Lee and I had a meeting, it was pretty well-attended by the Pelham staff this week on Monday, so that we kept them abreast of the budget developments. And there were three pieces of good news that we shared with them. And some of them, you know, they relate to this year, as we talked about in previous meetings, that there are implications. So the first is that we successfully have rented the Pelham gym, starting this week, five evening, or afternoons a week. We estimate that'll bring in, in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $12,000 in this year's budget, which, you know, we were, it connects to next year's budget. I feel like it's clean on that because, you know, we were concerned we were gonna have to pull more from choice, which would influence next year's budget from the current year. And also I'll say, it's just great. There's a lot of Pelham kids involved. I was there on Monday for their soccer and for, for not a huge group of kids because of COVID. We have a pretty, you know, it's not close to what a full class of 20 students would be. Just because of distancing, there, there's a much higher percentage of Pelham kids than I think ever participated in any of the previous Amherst recreation activities that used to be held in Amherst. So I think, separate from the income, I actually think it's been a great outlet for Pelham folks. And the other thing I noticed was there was a child who, I don't know, but she self-identified as being a Pelham student. And she said, "I'm so glad to be back in the school." Like, there was like, there was like, kind of mythic value in being back inside the walls in this activity. And so, you know, I'm really glad that not only are the income coming in to help the budget, but it's, it's certainly being seen by Pelham families as something that they have access to. And not that Amherst is very far, Fort Rivers right down the road, some of these maybe school-choice families don't live in Pelham. But the reality is, it's been well-attended by Pelham families. And what I heard today from someone who's coaching in the basketball clinic is the same is true for the basketball group that they're having. A higher percentage of Pelham kids participate. And this is someone who's done basketball clinics for a long time. So, you know, that's a really happy story, you know, and happy fiscally, but also happy in terms of some of the outcomes. Second piece of, of good news that we had is that we got our December charter report. And there are still no students from the town of Pelham listed on the state's charter report. If it's been around long enough, you know that there is no guarantees with that. I'll believe it on July 1st. And that's sort of where we are. But nonetheless, no news or zeros or good news is good news for us. And so I want to pass along that because that has implications. And the last piece of good news, or at least tentative good news, is that in late December, the federal government passed the Second CARES Act and it had money for school districts. It's, the challenge is it's, it's based on Title I formula. But I, in a conference call with the state, they are trying to work out, much like the First CARES Act, that non-Title I schools at least get some increment. And that can be applied in the current fiscal year, but also can be applied in the next fiscal year as well. So we're not out of the woods. As Dr. Slaughter, you know, I like my role. I get to tell the good news. We'll have, we'll have Doug come in and do a little bit of a dose of reality that this doesn't resolve the challenges we have. But I think on the front, I think the message I'd like to give before Doug starts going is, if any one of those three variables went south, we'd be in much worse shape. So we are not resolved, not Pollyanna, and not like there's no fiscal problems in the Pelham public school. At the same time, right, if the rental thing was a flop and nobody came, that would have been a problem. If there were no CARES Act coming, I know President Biden announced something this evening about more federal funds that he's hoping to send to schools and local governments. So, you know, that's good news. And certainly if the charter news was different, that would be significantly worse. So I think the hard thing, that's all the good news, the hard thing is we still aren't in great fiscal shape. But any one of those three going the wrong way would have had a much more negative impact on where we're sitting now and as we head towards FY '22. Before I turn it over to Doug, I thought I saw a hand go up.
Yeah, Ron, did you have a question? Go ahead.
At Tuesday's joint meeting, I asked the question, when do I get to ask whether we'll have in-person learning in the fall of 21, 2021? And I was told to ask that question or do something at this meeting. When do I raise that issue?
I think it'd be the, oh, I'm sorry. So I think the closest agenda item right now is on Health Metrics Memorandum of Agreement. I think more specifically, if it's gonna be a deeper conversation for the Pelham School Committee, I'd recommend putting that on the agenda for the February meeting. But I think, you know, as it relates to budget, it's a bit of a leap for that to be, you know, agenda-specific. I mean, it does have an influence, but certainly I think Ms. Hall and I hear you clearly that that is something you feel really strongly about being able to discuss with this body. I can't speak for them at all, but. Okay.
Can I also just ask a quick question? I can't believe I'm even bringing this up. So the, the charter thing, in the past, the reason that we've had the report showing someone in July, but not in December, has, that's been because of a student with residence in two towns because of parents who live separately, right? So it is still possible.
One of the times that was the case, the other time it was a clerical mistake.
Okay, all right. And then we don't, there wasn't, I just remember having this really long conversation with that person who has since retired, where like, we literally use the term "black box" of data and stuff like that. Has that been reviewed? Do we know that there is anyone that could live in the town part of the time?
Right. So we don't, we can't say definitively and they won't tell us definitively. But the, what happened last year is they did let us know that the split-resident family was no longer, all I know is they were no longer on the books for us. So I, you know, I don't know what that meant. They could have moved, they could, the family could not be enrolled in the Chinese Charter School, a whole bunch of variables. And so they told us that and that played out in June last year, thankfully. So my sense is that that is, fingers crossed, a resolved issue, but there's no real way to know. They have not resolved their data system to be able to accurately predict that for towns and communities.
Nope. His response to me was, if a person lives in Pelham, that's your responsibility.
Yep. So the door-to-door effort could resume, but it's a little hard in the COVID times. So, yeah. So with all that slightly positive news, I'll then turn it to Doug to share where we are. And I'm not trying to be fluke about it. We're still in a hard place, right? We're still looking at dwindling choice revenue. We're still looking at some structural deficit within Pelham Public School. I started with the three things, not just to be, again, Pollyadish, but if those three things had went another way, we might be in the dire place. And now we're in the slightly less dire, but still significant structural deficit place. And that's a better place to be in than if those variables had went south. But I'll turn it over to Doug.
Right. So I think I'll begin with if, and I believe the superintendent sent out, probably middle of the day, a single sheet that was laying out the circumstances as I thought it was. I, I didn't send that out to Panic U, but needless to say, after, after our conversation about charter and choice numbers for the, for the, for the current year, I realized in looking over and preparing for tonight that I hadn't included that good news in the calculation. So I have a new version of that sheet that hopefully the superintendent can display for you a little bit and, and share on screen. I'm hoping. If not, I can, I can potentially do it. But he's probably more facile with the software than I am.
All right. I'll give it a go, Doug. But since I'm, since I'm at home, my bandwidth starts getting iffy. Since I see you're in the office, I'll, I'll turn it back to you, but I'll get the revised sheet up in a second.
Okay. But, you know, the, the primary thing I would like to point out is that, we'll start with, with, you know, some of the things that didn't change between this afternoon and this evening, which is that, you know, we have currently a certain number of, you know, about 42 students in, that are choice into our school district. That generates a certain amount of revenue. We tend to have and try to keep a balance of revenue, of charge, excuse me, choice revenue. We try to keep a balance of choice revenue so that we have some flexibility year to year. And so, you know, in an effort to be conservative in estimates, you know, we have about four kids that are leaving sixth grade and going to seventh grade next year. And our current kindergarten class has six school-choice kids. So I presumed an uptick of two. If we get a much more, you know, positive response relative to school choice for, for next year, that will help our, our income during the year. In looking at the balances of what we have on hand, basically, at the end of this year, given the amount of school choice we're using this year, we have about $225,000. We have just about $1,000 less than that is the anticipated amount of, of choice revenues we'll have in the bank essentially. And so that's why the choice number for this budget planning process is, is set at 225. We're basically using the money we have on hand and trying not to use or money that we'll be bringing in during the year next year. But nonetheless, it, it goes back to the last conversation we had around our, our choice balance and our use of that, of that money. So you'll see that 225 is at the bottom of this, of this chart, which may be just a smidge off-screen. There it is. $225,000 is, is what we're anticipating using from choice revenues to help support our budget. You'll also notice that, you know, the biggest increase is at the top of the chart, which is our people. And, and, you know, this is by virtue of our estimate of, of the staff we have. And, and moving ahead to next year with the, you know, negotiated contracts that we have, you know, the, the increase looks to be about $58,000. You know, the short story is, in general, the, the town of Pelham likes us to shoot for about a 2.5% increase in, in what the town is actually paying for the school in their actual revenues. And that equals about $40,000. So needless to say, you know, by virtue of our just normal steps and, and that sort of thing in the contract, we're above that, that, that target of 2.5% increase in a single, in a single entity here. You know, immediately below that, the substitute line you'll see is, is a pretty decent increase. Part of that has to do with the fact that minimum wage is rising toward an eventual target of $15 per hour. This January went up 75 cents to 13.50, next January goes up to 14.25. You know, some of our, our substitutes will be paid at that, at that rate. We're going to keep pace with the, with minimum wage. And so that has an impact on our, our estimates for what those costs are. It's not that we're expecting any more hours of usage. It's just that they're getting a little more expensive. Those are nearly 5 and 6% increases from year to year. The line that I had forgotten earlier today, but that I realized after having all the conversations we had the other day about the good news in school choice and charter, I forgot to actually include the numbers on the previous one I sent you. So that line that shows a 28,009, 13 in parentheses, basically, that's, that's the good news. Is that the, you know, anticipating no charter school students and therefore no tuitions in that regard. And, and the number of kids that we have in, in choice out, that helps our budget by that almost $29,000 there. One of the significant change from this year to next, and this is something that I've had an email conversation with the, with the Chair of the Finance Committee in Pelham, has to do with the information systems. You'll see a $6,900 increase there. That's to replace 23 Chromebooks. The lifespan on those is, you know, depending on which kind you buy, you know, can be shorter than five years or longer than five years. And so because of that, there was some discomfort, and rightly so, that that doesn't really qualify as a capital item. So the, the, the feedback to us was, hey, put it into your operating budget. We know it's coming. We'll, we'll make sure to, you know, make people aware that that's what's happening and that that's an okay increase in the budget. So that $6,900 increase there is, is an, is a known extraordinary increase that the Finance Committee was suggesting to us. So that's, that's what's going on there. Utilities, another area where we've got some increase for a couple of reasons. Water and sewer rates are going up pretty significantly. We get, we pay those to the town of Amherst. They provide the water and sewer for our, for our school buildings. So those are going up in, in significant ways. Not a lot of real dollars, but if you looked at percentages, it's pretty scary. Electricity, heating, those things are also gonna go up a little bit. So that's, that's the increase there. The transportation, we've got that tied to our, essentially the, the National Consumer Price Index for our area, the New England area. And so that's a contractual increase. It's only about a percent or percent and a half, I think. It's a little less than a percent and a half increase there. And then, of course, risk and benefits is, is where our health insurance is. And we're estimating our health insurance increase at about 2%. So that's another sort of large area of, of, you know, sort of concern, but also impact on our budget. So in total, you know, that drives the budget up about, you know, $47,000 over the current year in, in raw numbers. And if we scroll down and sort of look at what our, our, you know, revenue sources are, it's a much more significant increase in, in the, the expectation from the town itself because we're using a smaller amount of, of, of choice monies, the 225. The other number that's gone down roughly in half is the Medicaid reimbursement. We're not providing as much of that kind of service. That service is basically, we, we provide certain medical care that qualifies for Medicaid reimbursement. And so we do file for that reimbursement and receive, you know, monies in, in regard to that and that helps support our budget. What I've done with Chapter 70 funding, the 238, 483 that's showing there, that's the actual number for this year. So I'm basically pegging that to be funded at this current year's rate. So we had estimated in the fiscal '21 budget, 235, 650. It came in just a little above that. I'm using that, that number from the actuals essentially for fiscal '21 as the estimate for Chapter 70. We may get news in a couple of weeks from the governor and, and that has more positive news around Chapter 70. That would be great. I don't know that that's gonna happen. But you sort of combine all those things. And so the pressure on the, on the, the town of Pelham to provide tax resources to us is such that it, that it goes up more than 2.5%. And so that, you know, we're above the 2.5% by about $67,000 there in the box. So we can reduce that though by a couple of things. The $6,900 is, is an additional expense that was considered above and beyond. And so that's one that they will, you know, will come off of that as far as when we're trying to make reductions to meet, you know, the, the ability of the town to, to fund the school. The $6,900 is expected. So that reduces that $67,000 by that. And then, of course, the other one is the, the revenue from, from the rental of the, of the building. And so that'll take another, say, $10,000 off. So now we get into a problem of about $50,000 that, that is, is more than likely what we'll be looking at over the next few weeks and trying to resolve in, in partnership with, you know, the Finance Committee in Pelham yourselves and Superintendent Principal to try to come to, you know, an appropriate and, you know, functional program and budget for, for next year. So I think I'll stop right there. I've said a lot of stuff and a lot of detail. So hopefully I'll be, I've been clear, but I'd certainly want to give everybody an opportunity to ask questions about what they're seeing and what is on their mind.
Yeah. So if I could add one thing before we go to questions, Doug, I just want to be really explicit and clear that with this budget, there's no way in Pelham, even if we can get that down to 50, some CARES Act even brings that down a little bit less, there is nowhere else to go than to make staff reductions. So, you know, when we come back in February, we'll get more specific about that. But I don't want anyone believing that we can find dimes and quarters around the edges to make that budget work without making reductions to staff at Pelham School. So, you know, I started with the positive news because it could be a lot worse, but this is very real. And I don't say this lightly. This is the least fun part of our job, I think, is trying to figure out how to make staff reductions. We've already started some conversations, you know, this document, as Doug said, you know, was finished, you know, I don't know, hour and a half ago, whatever it was. So it's not like we had this to work from. But we saw the writing on the walls explained to you, the committee and the staff last month, that we do have a structural deficit in Pelham and there's not, there's not extras. There's not, you know, things that can be pulled that are further away from kids. So this will be a very difficult budget year. And again, this was, compared to a month ago, our best-case scenario. So sorry to go from the good news to the bad news, but I want to be really explicit with the committee that that's, that's the type of thing we, we will be having to look at for next year.
All right. Thank you. Any, Ron, yeah, go ahead.
On the salaries, that's a $58,000 increase. If I'm correct, that's a 4% increase in salaries. While the CPI was much lower than that, why is it so much higher than the CPI index?
Yeah. Before we, before Doug answers, I just want to clarify, this is a negotiation year. We do not have a contract with actually any of our bargaining units for next year. So when Doug answers, he's gonna be speaking in hypotheticals because we are not interested in sharing more about our bargaining position in a public meeting. So other years where we have a contract, that number is fixed. That is not the case this year. I still think Doug can answer the question with some detail, but because we don't have a contract with any of our bargaining, they just send it. It's not like there's.
What went into the estimate then?
Right. That's what Doug can answer. Exactly. But I just wanted to, for, you know, foreshadow that some years we're able to be incredibly specific about that. This is not one of those years. But I'm sorry to interrupt, Doug. Why don't you jump in?
Yeah. So I think the, the shortest answer is this, is that even when we're in a circumstance without a contract, we, we will grant steps to our employees that are not at the top step of the salary schedule. And so, you know, that's one of the primary drivers. Any given step, if you're in a particular, you know, condition, any particular step from, from one year to the next is in that 3% to 5% range, depending on the contract and which, you know, lane you're in. So that's the largest driver of this. So the entirety of it.
Say that steps increase the payroll budget by more than 1%, by less than 1%? I mean, because that's a big, that's a big increase. So the COLA is really not the pay increase. The COLA is the step, which I believe about half the teachers get. And shouldn't that be taken into consideration when negotiating the amount of the COLA? Because I know that you like to tell us that the CPI was 2% and the pay raise was 2%. But really, the pay raise is more than 2%. It's 2% plus the step.
So to the latter point, I mean, I think that's certainly feedback, you know, you happen to, she's not here tonight, but Sarah Bess is on the negotiating team as the regional rep, and I think that could be brought back. And I think it's good for me and Doug to hear your concerns about how the COLA and step increases combined in terms of the salary lines. That's probably as much as we can say to answer. If you do look at the, the contracts or, you know, that we have or public documents, so you can see what, to what degree the step increases, what percent it is. But it's almost always that the step increases are larger than the COLA increases.
I was just at the 58 stood out as a 4% increase.
Oh, no, no, no. You're 100% right, Ron. But the, in most years, in most public. But the, the, in most years, in most public school districts, the step increases outpace the COLAs and not everyone gets the step increases. The other thing worth noting, right? If you're at the top of the step, uh, top of the step scale, you're not getting the step increases.
About half the teachers gives it though.
Across the district, I think what gets a little complicated is when your school is small as Pelham, that may or may not be, you know, yeah.
Okay.
Either, I guess this would be maybe Mike or Lee. I mean, you know, hearing that there's no way around some kind of staffing cuts is pretty jarring, not necessarily a shock, but certainly hard to hear. I know it's way too early for any kind of specifics and I'm sure it's difficult everywhere, but can you, can you just talk a little bit about how the process works, especially in a, such a small school community like Pelham, just in terms of, again, I'm not saying that it, it's easier at bigger schools, but it just, um, it all seems very personal, um, at Pelham. So can you talk a little bit about that? Again, without specifics of course.
Yeah, I can take that because Lee hasn't been through this before in Pelham, you know, I know in previous positions certainly, but not, not in Pelham. So I, I think it's really hard. I think you hit the nail on the head when you describe it. In a school like Pelham, we just have to think, what's the core? What are we obligated to do? What are we legally obligated to do? What are we contractually obligated to do? And that takes up pretty much most of what we have. There's not a lot of excess in Pelham. It's not like, oh, you can make class has a little better at third, bigger, larger at third grade by combining sections, uh, and going from four sections to three sections, and therefore you can save money. That's not the case in Pelham. But I think the process is essentially what I described. We try to look at what's required legally, what's required educationally, what's required contractually in term, in terms of making sure teachers have preps and, uh, all those things, what are IEPs, say, what a ELL, you know, services need to be. And then anything outside that circle is something we're going to have to look at, uh, and potentially take action on. And that's sort of how the way it, it works in Pelham. You know, I think the other commitment we've made, I think we've held, held good on is before any document becomes public with specific cuts, uh, both the individuals affected would be, had a conversation with the principal. And there's also an opportunity for the staff to hear it before it becomes a public discussion point. Some communities get a little cagey about that, uh, some school committees rather get a little cagey about that. And Pelham, uh, I've always felt very supported that, um, staff should find out. We can always email a document with some specifics to the committee, but we want to make sure that before it's a public document, that staff are aware of what's proposed. So that's, that's sort of the process, Lee. I don't know if it's anything you'd like to add?
I mean, I think you, you really hit the nail on the head. And because we're a small, tight knit staff, um, it is really emotional and it's, I think, important to name that and that that's, it's going to be hard news on top of a year of hard news. Um, and I'll just say that our, our staff are incredible professionals. They do amazing work with kids. Um, and the thought of having a school without any one of them, um, is really hard. And, um, but we have, we've figured out all the challenges that have come our way thus far this year. And, um, I'm really confident we'll figure out the best thing to do for kids moving forward.
All right. Yeah, thank you both. Any other budget questions? I'm going to go Brenda and then Ron.
This may be wishful thinking, but I'm just wondering, um, I, I know these are all predictions, but what if we had a, an increase in school choice people for the fall? Is that something that could be beneficial or like cut down on the amount that we had to, had to cut from the budget?
So, um, two things. One is, I think, uh, again, you all are right on the mark in every comment so far tonight. For Pelham School, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm in, I've, I've had meetings throughout the day, so I'm a particularly blunt mood. Lee wasn't in my Amherst budget meeting this afternoon, otherwise she saw, would have seen that. Not a bad mood, but just being transparent and blunt. And, and so I think the future of Pelham School relies on increasing the number of choice students. The school is not sustainable at 40 choice students. It's just not, um, it's not fiscally sustainable. And when it's not fiscally sustainable, then we have to make budget cuts that not, that make it not educationally sustainable. So we absolutely need to do that. I know Lee's done a great job in trying circumstance. And if Lee didn't do, make the effort she did this fall, we wouldn't be at 40, we'd probably be at 35 or 36. And, and that has already made a huge difference for our budget. And it is a challenging time, right? Uh, you know, it's, uh, through no fault of anyone, the reality is that, you know, it's hard to attract students during a pandemic and it's particularly hard when we haven't been in school very much, um, to attract students for virtual elementary school on a school choice model. So I think it gets back to Ron's point that he made earlier that would like to bring up is how soon can we get clarity on an approach for next year? And we need to do that. If we do, uh, get more choice commitments, that would certainly soften the blow for next year and maybe be able to restore, um, some cuts that we may have to make. But we're not going to know that soon enough to be able to, for our budget process, you know, this has to be voted in March to be on the town meeting docket. And we won't have clarity on that particular point, but I, I really like the way you're thinking about it, that if we can increase the choice numbers, uh, then maybe we can, you know, try to claw back some of the things that we may have to reduce this year. So thank you for that helpful suggestion.
Ron, go ahead.
Getting back to the, uh, $6,900 for Chromebooks. Is it, is my understanding correct that with the, um, virtual learning that students are doing, every student has already been given a Chromebook in Pelham School? Is that correct?
Lee, do you want to respond to that one?
Sure. So, um, Chromebooks were made available to families who requested them to borrow from the district. So I will say, depending on the class, between a quarter and half of the students are using district issued devices, um, others are using personal devices, whether that be iPads, Chromebooks, or laptops, or desktops at home.
Then was the $6,900 for replacement of Chromebook carts? Or what, what, what was that intended to do?
So I can take that one. So in talking with the, with the, um, IS Director Jerry Champagne, you know, there are currently existing, um, Chromebook carts in the school. And essentially one of those has a set of machines that are, are, um, becoming obsolescent for lack, lack of term. And so it's really just a replacement of one of the carts worth of machines. How they'll actually get utilized will depend a little bit on in person, not in person, et cetera, et cetera. But it's essentially one cart has reached, uh, end of life and we're replacing that.
Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
Then another question, which is not to be, uh, tooth night, but I read the budget on the email and it said there was a $96,000 gap. Today you presented a $67,000 gap. Why can't we hope for a $7,000 gap with the next iteration of this thing? I'm not facetious, but I mean.
Well, in some ways I wish, I, I hope that to be the case. I mean, it would be lovely if we got, uh, there's a couple of big pieces of news that we'll have coming to us in the next few weeks, one of which will be, um, what will be our actual, uh, insurance rates for the coming year. That could be the circumstance, that could be good, you know, very good news. You know, I'm, I'm thinking that our estimate, which was about the 2% increase is, is pretty reasonable, but I'm hoping it comes in lower than that, which will be, uh, which will be helpful. That's not, you know, that increase is not a huge increase, but nonetheless, it's, it's a distinct one. I think the other is the Chapter 70 funding. I think that's one that, you know, we've taken a fairly cautious approach, um, to what that number looks like, you know? Indications from the state are that their revenues for taxes are, are pretty decent. That may bode well for all school districts as far as, uh, state funding for education. But, you know, we just don't know yet. We'll get our first taste of that when the governor puts his budget out on the 27th, I think.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Next up, fiscal year 22 preschool.
I will take that one. So, uh, let me stop sharing the screen so that you can see everyone a little bit easier. That is better. That's even better. Okay. So, um, the, uh, as, just to go backwards before we go forwards, um, so the preschool program started in 20, I think 12 and 13 or 13, 14. It's been a super helpful, um, part of our school and an incredibly valued part of our school community in Pelham. I, I think the intent was to increase choice numbers. I think, you know, it, it, we've had a hard time quantifying that impact, but the impact, the larger impact on having young students in the school has been fabulous. We've been blessed to have wonderful staff members, uh, to lead that program. And, uh, last year, uh, we had a hard time committing to it. It is a self, it is intended to be a self sustaining program. In other words, it is, uh, it's in a public school, but it's intended to, uh, bring in enough revenue where it, um, doesn't rely on Pelham School funding. Obviously there's in-kind services in the space, the heating, custodial staff, you know, the principals work. And, and I think we, we righted that ship. We had to increase rates, which was very difficult to right that ship. We did that because we were close to closing the preschool a couple of years ago because of finances. Last year we, um, I made a recommendation, which was supported, that we explored whether families were willing to, um, pay, whether it was virtual or in person, given the uncertainty of the school year. The results, and thank you Lee for your quick work on that, right as you started, uh, showed that really there wasn't sufficient demand unless it was a commitment to be in person. And, uh, while the world is definitely getting to be, hopefully, uh, soon, uh, a, a better place in terms of numbers, um, we find ourselves, uh, not being clear on exactly what next year will hold. So again, I'm in this place of struggling with what to recommend, not because of the value that I place on preschool or the preschool program, uh, but really because I don't know how we can in good conscience, I can in good conscience, uh, take deposits and for people to assume that the preschool program will happen regardless of any circumstance, when I can't really guarantee that for next year right now. So I guess, you know, what I'd ask is that, you know, perhaps we can come back to this if we, and see if we have more clarity in a month or two. But I can't, you know, encourage Lee, I don't feel good encouraging Lee to be doing recruitment for preschool when, until we have real clarity that, that preschool would be able to operate, uh, free from some constraints next year. I know there are preschools in the area that have operated, uh, successfully this year, um, in a lot of the towns in and around Pelham. But because we have other constraints being, uh, operated in a public school, it's hard to make that commitment. And so, you know, I think this is really hard because it gets into staffing and it gets into families wondering and it leaves already had families inquiring about it for next year. But, um, I think we're going to be in the same conundrum, uh, when we're in the budget process. And so, you know, my, my recommendation is to come back to this. And if we're able to fund it, do it sort of off the normal budget cycle somehow or something like that. But until we have full clarity on what next year will look like, I, you know, I, I really struggle to imagine how we can commit to a program when we don't know what the funding structure would be, especially given the conversation we just had. So, you know, Doug pulled the preschool out of that, uh, presentation, you know, because we talked about it, uh, because I really do think it has to be a separate kind of thing. And I don't, you know, I don't want to be again, uh, too negative, um, about it, but, um, I, I guess I really struggle to see operationally how we can do that with kind of the nature of public schools in 2021 and the uncertainties that come with them.
Uh, Ron, yeah?
Assuming that we don't have a preschool class in 2021, are there any long run implications? Are there licensing things that we don't adhere to? Will space be gobbled up for other purposes? In other words, can we then have, if we don't have it in 2021, can we reinstitute the program for 2022?
Yeah, so every year there's a licensure process that goes on. So it wouldn't have, uh, an impact there. I think, uh, I appreciate that perspective because it is an interesting question. If we choose not to have the preschool, if you choose not to have the preschool program operate next year, uh, right now it is chock full of, uh, tables, uh, that we would use in a COVID era. That's a terrible use of a beautiful space. And the other reality is we're probably going to be in a desk world next year too. I find it hard to imagine that there'll be a vaccine for kids under the age of 12 by the time school starts next year. In fact, I would probably make a wager on that if, if one wants to do that with me. Not money, like cookies, brownies, you know, things like that. So, um, uh, you know, I think what would be optimal frankly, um, is if we're back in the building next year is figuring out a space to put those, um, tables and actually have that be a separate space so that the specials aren't sharing the gymnasium. Cause right now the gymna, we want to keep the gymnasium as a gymna, like it is, as I started the meeting, it is lovely there. And so I think if we didn't have a preschool because of the uncertainty and the space was available, going back to the original purpose, uh, would be my recommendation, um, and seeing what we could do with tables or if we're just happy with the desks. I mean, I'll be honest, it was only seven days, but a lot of our early childhood educators, both in Pelham and in Amherst, were like really opposed to desks on principle. And then they got into the building like, this is pretty cool. I, I don't mind these desks, right? You know, it's, it was okay. They figured out ways if they wanted to group kids, that kids could still be grouped and distanced in, in these days, but you could make desks out of, you know, or tables out of desks, uh, pretty easily. And they're actually really high quality desks. The facilities department did a great job. They're, they're nicer than a lot of the tables that we lost. So, you know, I'd like to think about creative use of the space, um, but it wouldn't be that, uh, you know, we would rip down, tear down walls and it wouldn't be available for a preschool space a year after. Leaving the space vacant for a year doesn't make tremendous sense either. Right? So I'd like to think about letting the PE teacher have a gym that is not have other things in it, other days of the week, which then curtails, um, his or her, in this case his, uh, his programming and the way he would structure it. And also it's a lot of work on the custodial staff to be changing that space, uh, multiple times a week for the different programs that are in it. So long winded answer, Ron, I apologize, but you know, we have, you know, I do have some thoughts on the topic and, and we, we'd certainly have to figure out where to put stuff, but I'd rather figure that problem out than our current situation.
Other preschool questions? So I, I guess, i- i- in order to be able to really appropriately recruit people for the preschool, you say we need clarity on what next year looks like. As a practical matter, and I'm not going to get into a conversation about next year yet, but like, that's not coming anytime soon. So it, it seems to me, I don't, what, what else are we going to learn in say the next one or two months? It doesn't, it seems like we probably won't, right?
I think the odds are that, um, you know, I, I'm just trying to have a glimmer of hope that, uh, the world turns around in the next.
I'm not trying to take that away from you. No, that is, I just, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm just trying to understand. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if, if all of a sudden the numbers were one tenth of what they are now and everyone starts feeling really comfortable being back in schools, um, maybe that would change things. I think that's an unlikely scenario for us. And, you know, um, I mean this in no bad way, uh, at all, but, you know, we have a bargaining unit and the bargaining unit is a pre-K through 12 bargaining unit. So any decisions we'd make would need to be bargained and I have a hard time figuring that we will have a bargaining agreement or any, or even conversations frankly, that would happen for that. That's not a, a knock on the APEA at all. It's just, that's not the way bargaining works.
Yeah, that was my thinking just about actual practical process.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, if you're asking me point blank now, I don't see that resolving by March. And that's why if it, if it was to resolve, it'd have to be something way off the typical budget calendar, you know? I can't imagine including it in our budget next year. And I don't, I don't see it probably resolving itself. But, um, you know, I just wanted to, you know, we wanted this bulleted point to be on here, both because it's important or this agenda item is important, and also to explain that it's, it's not on the budget that you're going to see because we don't have any confidence that we could pull it off in the normal budget cycle. Probably don't have much confidence we could pull it off in general, but, um, a savvy budget document reader might say, where is the staff for the preschool? And they could compare it to two years ago and see that it's not there. And, um, I didn't want anyone to think that that was, we came to that conclusion willy nilly, um, or just casually. It's just that I, I don't, I don't see how we move forward on running the preschool next year. And I certainly don't see how we could even contemplate funding it out of the appropriated budget right now given where we are.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else on preschool? Okay. Next up is regionalization. So last time we met just in Pelham, we had a brief conversation about, um, informally exploring, um, regionalization to see if it's something that maybe Amherst would be open to, if it's a conversation that we should restart, not from the beginning, but just from where the previous conversation left off. So to start that process, I met with, um, the Chair of Amherst and the region. And, you know, everything that's going on in Amherst and the region with the budget and, and just everything else. And I say this not critically at all, the sense was that like there, there is not the bandwidth or the willingness to engage on this right now. So I think we should table it. I think especially given news about, you know, an unsustainable budget and, you know, something that is characterized as just slightly less than dire. I don't think we should rule this out forever. But for now, I just, you know, we, we certainly can't force the issue. And I don't think this is the time to really be pushing it. So that's just my recommendation, but I am not, you know, this is a committee, it's not my decision. So I certainly would like to hear what others have to think, if anyone wants to pursue something else or has other ideas.
Okay. I guess I'll just, I just add, it just seems very reasonable, like it is really trying times and everyone has to focus on their own school. So I think, but I would be in favor of tabling it and maybe, you know, maybe in six months we'll be in a different place.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And obviously anyone can talk to me about putting things on the agenda at any time. So you know where to find me. All right, health metrics and memorandum of agreement. So we had, we had left this on just to make sure that when we gathered, we, we are not, we're allowed to talk about this. Given the vote this past Tuesday, I don't know that there's too much to be said. But if anyone wants to talk on this topic, we certainly can.
Is now the appropriate time to talk about fall of 2021?
I think as long as it focuses on health metrics slash memorandum of agreement. I mean, we can't get into too detail and start dating that, but if it's, if it is closely related to the MOA, then yes.
I have two questions. One, will we as a committee be asked to weigh in on the level or the method of any trigger that may be in place governing the fall of 2021? I mean, we were this year, will we be next year? Will we be part of the discussion of the MOA for fall of 2021?
Well, okay, Mike, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can you clarify who the we is, the Pelham School Committee?
Pelham School Committee, I mean, because that's the only person, that's the only committee I'm on.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding who the we was, I apologize. So, yeah, I think that feedback should go through Sarah Bass.
And then my original
To be clear, I only see Sarah Bass and not Ms. Dancer because Ms. Dancer recuses herself from regional discussions with the APA because of a family member. Who's that? So you don't get to hear that, I do, because I'm with Ms. Dancer at the region. So I wasn't trying to ignore or disregard Ms. Dancer, but Ms. Kenny happens to both be on the negotiation subcommittee and a Pelham representative. So she'd be your point person in terms of sharing feedback.
Then my original question, when will we know whether fall of 2021 will be in person or distance learning? And how do we begin to have some input into that? I don't know what to say and be within the bounds of the agenda item.
So because you're talking about a potential negotiation with multiple bargaining units, APEA, AFSCW, you know, it's the UFCW, the food service workers, AFSCW is custodians, maintenance bus drivers and APA, which is the Administrative Association. My strong recommendation is that you share that feedback directly with Sarah Bass and that she's informed by your thoughts as she goes into the negotiations instead of having a public discussion about negotiations.
And then for future agenda items, what is the nature of my question that I put on the agenda for future agenda items?
It seems like if you want to have a, what I heard was that you want to have a conversation, not necessarily just about negotiations, but about a desire.
I just want to know, how do we? Most of my constituents want to know when and if there will be in-person learning in the fall. How do I do something to tell them that I'm acting on their behalf?
You would share that feedback that you heard from them with Sarah Bass and you'd encourage, let them know that, that feedback's being taken into account by the school committee representative in Pelham, who happens to also be on the negotiating team. There's no fault, there's nothing wrong with you, Ron, because what I hear, I think I hear you saying, or at least it's implied in what I'm understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you have some opinions about the importance of returning to in-person learning in the fall based on what you've heard from constituents. There's nothing wrong with saying that. I think if we talk about details about that, that's what's negotiated. But you're, you're certainly a school committee member, you're representing the town of Pelham and you certainly can be sharing your strong feelings about that issue in any public meeting. I think where it gets into, how do we get there, what do we need to do? That's where it gets a little bit more about negotiations.
Ask this committee to put on a future agenda item when the time comes in this meeting?
I think we can, we can put fall 2021 planning on the agenda and we can talk about that, right? Yeah, well, we just, we certainly couldn't talk about anything related to negotiations, but I think people could express things that are important to them related to 2021.
The, 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 all, everything people have said about restraints and constraints makes sense. However, there, there is one burning issue, whether it should affect our decisions or not, is will there be full time in-person learning in the fall? And I would just like some opportunity, some time to talk about that. I mean, I understand this may not be the appropriate time, but when will be the time? What are the parameters of our discussion? I mean, because, well, period, period, because everything I say basically affects negotiation, which is inappropriate at this time. So anyways.
So, so I have a couple of things. I think one is, I think you, you've, you currently expressed your viewpoint in a public meeting, so that's good. If we want to have it as an agenda item, certainly I'm not opposed for other people to be able to express their viewpoint. I don't think there's actually work that you can do on that front, the committee can do, you as an individual at the committee, other than expressing your viewpoint and make sure that you're communicating with Sarah Bass. And I think there's nothing wrong with doing that, but when, when we talk about a discussion, it might be everyone could share their viewpoint on that issue. There's nothing wrong with that. I think where we get to the how to or what do we need to do to get there? That's where the negotiation piece really comes in.
Do I tell Sarah Bass that at a meeting?
You could do it, that's, I mean, I'm sorry, is it okay to keep going? Yeah. If that feels appropriate to you.
What, what am I constrained not to talk about? Because it's not clear.
Well, you're, you're, you don't have to be too constrained because you're not a negotiating, you're not involved in negotiations. So I think you can express your viewpoint, but I think the distinction would be you, I don't see work that can be done on this committee other than viewpoints expressed in support of a return or to in-person or not return to in-person, right? That level of kind of philosophical discussion or opinion is, is incredibly appropriate. I think if you're talking about work you can do or how do you get that done? The Pelham School, based on the policies, Pelham School Committee doesn't negotiate with any of our bargaining units. So that, that's, if that's the barriers, negotiations with bargaining units, that's not something in the auspices of the Pelham School Committee.
And I can't express my opinion on the nature of the proposed trigger for fall of 21 to Sarah Bass in this forum.
Yeah, you're not negotiating and she probably can't respond, but
Well, but, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't see an issue with that in terms of negotiations or anything like that, you know? But I think if you have any questions, with the Chair's permission, I think getting in touch with our legal counsel, which I could help you with, you know, is something that individual members do have access to. The other free option would be getting in touch with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and they have free advice that you can receive so that it doesn't, it pisses me a little awkwardly to be answering all the questions because I'm on both ends of this, right? You know, I am in the room for negotiations. I'm not a school committee member, I'm not a lawyer. So, you know, what I can do is give advice, but that's all I can do. But I think, you know, there are other places you might be able to get advice that might be helpful for where those boundaries are. And if you're interested in those, just shoot me an email. I'm sure I, I can link you to the resources that might be from outside Pelham, which may or may not be helpful to you.
Okay, anything else on health metrics slash MOA? Okay. All right. Anti racism work. So Mike, just so you know, Jesse is getting on momentarily. So we have a special guest star. Ah, here she is. So Jesse, I'm not going to give you too much of an intro because I, I kind of want to leave it to you to talk about what you're working on, but Jesse is doing some work with the town of Pelham on its anti racism initiatives. And so she reached out to me about ways that the work that her committee is doing can collaborate with our committee, which I think is a great idea. So Jesse, do you want to just talk a little bit about what you guys are doing and how we can work together?
Yeah, great. Thanks so much for having me. It's great to see all you guys. I miss you lots and you're doing some really important work. So yeah, I'm a part of the Pelham Anti Racist Action Committee that was created by the Select Board. I believe everybody in the town of Pelham received a postcard asking if they were interested in joining the committee. And they got a 15 responses and they couldn't deny anybody. So everybody joined the committee. Some have, it's dwindled down a little bit, but we have a group of people and we're meeting monthly. And then we also have working groups. And we just want to reach out to other town committees and make connections. There will be a write-up in the slate when it gets to your doorstep about our mission statement and our working groups. And we've decided to call them working groups instead of subcommittees so that we can include others on them. We feel that it's important, you know, some people may not be able to commit fully to the committee, but may want, are interested in any of the topics that we're looking at with an anti racist lend in the lens in the town of Pelham. And so there's the education working group, a history working group, an outreach, policy and governance is together and then public safety. And as a representative of, or a member of the education working group, I just wanted to reach out to you guys and see if there's anything, you know, to create a partnership. And if there's anything that we could do together or anything we can do for you, vice versa with you. And yeah, that's, that's kind of where we are at this point.
All right.
Oh, I can also say I've met with Lee and I met with Mike and I've done some email corresponding with Doreen. And we've talked about kind of like the history of anti racist work in Pelham and in the district. I do have a document if I can find it. Yeah. So I saw, Mike, you had a hand up?
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
There we go. Yeah, I just want to say I think, thanks to Jesse for facilitating the work in the community. That's incredibly powerful. And obviously she is our school committee cap, still ready to put on in terms of leadership. So we appreciate that. But I really appreciate the conversation that I had with Jesse and another member of her, I believe another member of your committee. I mean, I know that person from another venue. And I think it's really critical work that is so important that it doesn't just come from kind of educational leaders or others, but really that the community is, sees themselves as leaders and sees themselves as learners. And so I just wanted to publicly share my appreciation for Jesse and others who are facilitating and leading the group. Because I think that genesis or that union between or synthesis between the community as well as the school is, is sort of how change happens. You know, it's not, oftentimes people want change to be linear. Like there's one leader and then this happens and then this happens. And that's not the way it works. It's certainly not the way, in my experience, anti racism works. So just appreciate Jesse and the others who are taking this on. Look forward to partnerships moving forward.
Yes, agreed. I feel like the, the thing that comes up for me is that I, you know, this is clearly very important work. I know Lee on a day to day basis is doing stuff at the school that it's not just like the sideshow, it's kind of part of every decision that she makes. And that just seems really clear just from communications that I get as a parent and, you know, updates that you give in this setting. So I, you know, I think the thing, just as a committee member that I want is like, what I, I want to find ways where we're doing that as a committee too, where like anti racism work just becomes just part of what we do all the time, not like an agenda item that's on there that we talk about in a discreet way. And I'm not sure how to do that. I feel like I'm sort of throwing out this thing. I don't have a, a suggestion or a solution. To me, I feel like that's the, the, it's a pretty nebulous goal. But that's what, where I think we should be headed. And I think especially being in Pelham and, I mean, just to be really frank, to look at the faces on this screen and just like do the sometimes uncomfortable work of like talking about our whiteness and what that means as elected officials. So I, I still don't have the answers. I, I think I have more questions than answers, but I, at least, at least in like work Jesse with what, what you all are doing, I certainly have an openness to this. So I'm not sure exactly what concrete next steps are, but I just want this to be the beginning of these conversations and, and then get to a point where it's just this muscle we develop and then we're not thinking about it and we don't have agenda items, it's just part of how we operate.
Yeah. That sounds great.
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, just something that Doreen and I have spoken about a, a bunch recently is what level of anti racism training can we supply and support school committee members with? Because we do so much for our staff and we don't often think about school committee training. So, you know, that's something that, I'm sure there'll be joint meetings, school committee meetings to come. Not for that topic explicitly, but that, you know, we do have some thoughts about that. And, you know, both of us are working, we're partners in MSN, which is the Minority Student Achievement Network. Our districts are partners with that. And, and so I do wonder, you know, there, there's some leadership equity PD that both Doreen and I are doing together this year with Darnisa, in a blank, I'm, I'm not good on names tonight, but I, I will get you the information. But we, we've, we've had an outstanding experience with that. And I think it's, it's very much on the leadership for equity side, which being that you're, you all are elected from a governance perspective, I, I found it very good. And I think, you know, with anti racism work, like any other professional development, one size doesn't always fit all, right? It has to be, you know, particular to your context. And so we do have some thoughts about that and we do have some ideas. And, and perhaps, you know, you and the, the Chair of the other committee, the next time we do have a joint meeting, maybe not the next time we do have a joint meeting, but sometime we have, that might be Tuesday and the agenda may be posted. But sometime when we have a joint meeting, we should try to figure out a way to have that conversation because I think it's really critical that if we're, we're serious about it in terms of our staff members and our students, then the leaders in the district should also be engaging in that work. So more to come on that one, but I, I think your point's well taken. And, you know, I feel like in hindsight, you know, PD for school committee is like short, right? It's like, in the overall scheme of things, it, it often is the thing that gets skipped. You know, if it's not coming from MASC, then there, there's not a lot of offerings. But, you know, we could do some thinking about how to fill that gap.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Okay. Anything else for Jesse?
Do you miss being here, Jesse? Meetings?
Right, Mike, don't let her off. You're now Jesse.
I, I still keep up with all the news, don't you worry.
All right, thank you so much for coming and let's keep talking.
Great, thanks for having me.
Good night. All right, next up, Desi requirements on student learning time.
Yep, and so I'll do an intro and then Lee will take this one. But as you're aware, at the last joint meeting, thank you for endorsing a waiver request. That waiver was denied by Desi, which I had by less fun moments, speaking of, you know, having some hard moments and, and then I less fun moments, speaking of, you know, having some hard moments, and, and then I did what probably I should always do when I have those moments, is I called, and I said, you know, I want to talk to someone. And so I talked to someone whose name is Rob Curtin, he's an administrator at DESI, and it was really an excellent conversation that, that put my mind much more to ease than it was. And what he went over is some changed definitions for structured learning time the state has, and the reason we were denied, despite the evidence we had, was that screen time is not synonymous with structured learning time, especially at the elementary school level, and that there were, there were some more flexibilities that are offered for our students, and then Lee and I, and mostly Lee, I want to give her incredible credit for this, because she did a fabulous job, very quickly looked at the current Pelham distance learning schedule, and looked at what we're currently doing, any minor adjustments that we were able to need to make, and the good news is this won't upend the apple cart in terms of the, the program that we have, we don't have, we don't need to have families worried that they're going to have tremendous more screen time, because we got that feedback loud and clear, but I think with some of the innovative, innovative approaches that, that Lee and the staff have put into place, we really don't have to, a lot of it's definitional changes. And, and then we'll be meeting, the next data collection is at the end of this month, and I feel really good about being able to hit the metrics that are, that are set in the, the new state regulations for synchronous learning, or structured learning time, excuse me, I made the mistake again, for Pelham School. Ron has a question, but after that, I'll just go right to Lee, and she can give some more details.
Okay, go ahead, Ron.
Do you mean screen time? Because the entire curriculum is screen time. You mean asynchronous?
So the term that DESI is using is structured learning time. And to be very candid, what, what they're really concerned about, and I heard that loud and clear on the phone call, there are certain districts, there's one district I know for a large district, that all of Fridays was asynchronous.
Okay.
Right, so it was like, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you saw the teacher, and Friday, kids were on their own. There were no teachers available. We weren't doing that from the beginning, so I wasn't so worried about that part of it, but it was helpful to know that that was their concern, and those of you who heard me in the summer and fall, I shared that concern, right? I think teachers need to see, students need to see their teachers every day, and receive instruction in all the core areas every day, right? And so I'll turn it over to Lee, who can describe a little bit of what, you know, minor tweaks and adjustments and definitional changes we need to make to the schedule to fit the, the state requirements.
Sure, so I'll just alleviate any nerves by sharing that we're not wildly changing the schedule, and so day-to-day students, student schedules will not be looking very different. What we were able to do is look back at how we're utilizing some of the small group time and choice board time, and really just modifying some of, some of the semantics around some of the language, because after Mike spoke with the Department of Ed, we were in much closer alignment than we thought we were, with the expectations, so I'm so grateful that we clarified before upending the entire schedule. So there's two times in the day where we were really kind of looking at, just adding a little bit more clarity to our definition of that time. So the first is that each class has a 30-minute block that we called the WIN block. WIN is an acronym for What I Need. So we're using that for structured tiered small group instruction. So for some students, that might be working directly with the classroom teacher on remediation, or some just reteaching of concepts that they learned earlier in the day. Some students might be doing extension work, they might be working with a paraprofessional, or a classroom volunteer, or another teacher during that time, but all students are engaged in learning, even if they're not all together in the same group. So that was one time in the schedule where we actually realized we were meeting DESI's expectations, and we, we, we were using too narrow of a lens. The other time is the Choice Board Independent Learning Time. So that is directed time. Our teachers are offering students a choice of activities to complete within 30 minutes, with options to follow up with the staff member if they have any questions. So some of those options on the Choice Board are on screen, some of them are not, but they're all related to learning from earlier in the day. So for example, in a first grade classroom, they might be learning about digraphs, like the TH sound and the SH sound, so their Choice Board for that afternoon would have opportunities where they could go on Lexia and play a game with some, with some of the digraphs, they could do a workbook page in the Super Kids book that has digraph pages, or they could play, play a game with cards that have digraphs in them. So all of those choices would be related to the academic content from earlier in the day, and then the teacher would be available to follow up on any of the activities. So those were the two times of the day where we were really just clarifying the language, and with that clarification, we, we actually exceed the amount of structured learning time by a couple of minutes. So we feel very confident that in the next round of data collection will be well within the parameters of the expectations, without causing too much of a disruption for families or our teachers, because the feedback we received from the community was really, really positive.
Okay, great, thank you. Any, any questions for Lee? Mike, did you want to add something? You look unmuted and ready to go.
I was just ready if there was questions. I'm not pushing that there, there should be, so I think you did a very thorough explanation, so I think we're good.
Okay, great. Yeah, well, I, thank you for that, for both of you, and sorry it took this extra step when we were kind of already cool, but at least this was the outcome. Okay. All right, next up is warrants. I have several. Get comfy. I, Sarah Hall, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $50,951,035 for the warrant dated December 10th, 2020. This included general fund expenses of $32,762.91, grant fund, and grant fund expenses of $18,188.44, and I signed this on December 10th, 2020. I, Sarah Hall, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $40,743.48. That was all payroll, and that warrant was dated December 16th, 2020, and I signed it December 14th, 2020. I confirmed with Doug that it's fine that I signed it before the actual date of the warrant. I, Sarah Hall, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $24,068.73 for the warrant dated December 21st, 2020. This included general fund expenses of $19,013.12, and grant fund expenses of $5,055.61, and I signed that on December 22nd, 2020. I, Sarah Hall, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $61,148.53 that was, for the warrant dated December 30th, 2020, and that was all payroll. And I signed that also on December 30th. The last one, I, Sarah Hall, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $57,431.16 dated January 13th, 2021, and I signed that on January 8th. That's it. No gifts. I will take a motion to adjourn. Oh, Margaret, yes.
Sorry, I have a question first.
Yeah.
How can I get the mailings that go out to the parent community? I have no student in the school. I would love to get them.
I, I would love to add you to our email list.
Okay. Oh, yeah, that would be awesome. Thank you.
And on the district side, not that you're asking, but if anyone isn't getting the emails, just email Debbie Westmoreland.
I am not.
Yep, so you get the Friday update every week, so, you know, please just shoot an email that you'd like it, she has a master list that she keeps, and
Okay.
Please do so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret. Margaret, add a motion.
I adjourn.
Oh, no, Brenda, I'm giving you credit, you seconded that.
We will second that.
All right, all right, we'll do rule call vote. Ron?
Ron, aye.
Margaret?
Margaret, aye.
Brenda?
Brenda, aye.
And Hall, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody. Good night.